2021, it's another beautiful day here in paradise. I'm very happy to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning Board of Appeals for the month of March 2021. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you all very much. We'll start off with having our Board Secretary calling the roll, please.
Christopher Hagan.
Here.
Christopher Camerer.
Here.
Malika Barlow.
Present.
Michael Hyman.
Here.
Michael Wood. Let the record reflect that Michael Wood is absent. Alfred Fields.
Present.
Jonathan Burgess.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We do have a quorum. We'll first move into item number two on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes for December 3rd, 2020. The minutes were in the board packet, so hopefully everyone has had a chance to review those. So at this time, if there, if anyone has any corrections or notations to make to the minutes, please, you can use the raise your hand feature or, or just speak. Otherwise, if not, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
I so motion.
Second.
Okay, I believe that was moved by Board Member Barlow and seconded by Board Member Hyman.
Yes.
It will, we'll just do a voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, let the record reflect that the, the minutes were approved unanimously. So we'll move on now to item number three, which is a report from our zoning staff.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope everyone's doing well. I just have a couple items that I want to go over. First is, on the agenda, agenda, I wanted to bring to everyone's attention that the first application, it was originally noticed as a variance to the pool setbacks, but afterwards identified that the applicant's request actually requires a waiver in the form of a Class B special use permit. And that's in accordance with Section 94-304 of our code. The applicant's proposal has not changed. It's still a deviation from the setback requirements of the pool. However, it's just the type of application and the criteria that are to be considered. But everything that was included in your packet, the staff report, backup material and everything, reflect that correct application type. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Lastly, and most importantly, I want to provide some updates regarding the boards of memberships. First is Mr. Hagan and Mr. Camerer were reappointed by the mayor for an additional three-year term. So their terms will expire in 2024. Congratulations. We're excited about your continued service and want to say thank you for the years that you've put forth and look forward to the, to the next three years with you as well. Additionally, on behalf of the city, I want to welcome to the board Mr. Jonathan Burgess. He is our second alternate who was recently appointed. He's a resident of West Palm Beach and also works in West Palm as a green building consultant and landscape architect. He also comes to the board with additional experience in planning, land use and zoning. He previously served on the city's Sustainability Advisory Committee, the Gulf Advisory Committee, and has volunteered for a number of organizations throughout South Florida. So on behalf of the city's planning division, we look forward to Mr. Burgess's active participation on the ZBA and the personal and professional perspective that he can offer to application, to each application that's up for consideration. So welcome, Mr. Burgess, and congratulations on your appointment. As a second alternate, obviously, he will fill in in the absence of a board member who is not otherwise filled in by the first alternate. So, but with that, that concludes my remarks and we'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, John. Item number four is remarks by the chairperson. So first of all, just echo what John said and welcome Jonathan to the board. Glad to have you on board and look forward to having you alongside us here. And maybe someday we'll all be together in person back in the, the chambers. That'll be nice. Secondly, just for today's meeting, since Board Member Wood was absent, then Board Member Fields will be a voting member. Then Board Member Burgess will be participating for any questions, comments. But then in terms of, of the vote, unless another board member has to recuse themselves, then Board Member Burgess will not be participating in, in the vote. Last item was just, because we are conducting this virtually, I'll read the following statement. Pursuant to Mayor Keith James's Executive Order Number 2020-05 issued on April 2nd, 2020, the City of West Palm Beach's boards and committees are conducting their meetings through media technology and have released the requirements to have a quorum of its members physically present at City Hall. On April 14th, 2020, Mayor Keith A. James issued Executive Order Number 2020-09, which specifically provides rules of procedure for conducting city meetings, including requirements for quasi judicial hearings. To ensure the ability for the public to continue to participate in this public hearing is being streamed live and available for viewing in the City Commission Chambers located at City Center, which is 401 Klimata Street, on the condition that social distancing be practiced. Additionally, for those wishing to access the meeting remotely, they're able to do so directly through the applicable Zoom webinar link, as well as the city's usual media channels, including West Palm Beach TV 18, the city's website, and the city's YouTube, Facebook and Twitter feeds. Anyone from the public who would like to provide comment on an agenda item is able to do so via the following. One, in the City Center Flagler Gallery. Two, dialing 561-320-6482 and leaving a voicemail not to exceed three minutes. Three, sending an email or video recording to zbapubliccomment@westpalmbeach.org. Or, four, completing the online public comment form at www.wpb.org-publiccomments. Those accessing the meeting directly through Zoom may also use the question and answer or raise hand features. Anyone accessing just the Zoom audio during their phone may raise their hand by pressing star nine. Regardless of method, please be sure to indicate the agenda number or case number for which you're providing comment. Everyone providing testimony must also have video capability and will need to be sworn in at the appropriate time. The swearing in will occur at the start of each case on the agenda. If you're about to provide testimony and were not sworn in, please be, please indicate such and be sworn in before offering your testimony. After the applicant presents their case, staff will provide a presentation and then the public will have an opportunity to speak or have their comments read into the record from previously received correspondence. The board will then go into executive session. Prior to rendering a decision, the board will confirm no additional public comments have been received by staff. Lastly, for the members of this board, it is emphasized that Florida sunshine laws are applicable. You may not use the chat feature or any other form of individual communication to discuss matters with other board members, the applicant or the general public during the meeting. So, yeah, we're running into, I was worried about running into the time constraints that Mr. Camerer and I had, but I think that's the, the end of, of, of that. So that's the end of my remarks. We'll then move on to item number five, which is the Declaration of Ex parte Communication. For that, we'll just go down the, the, the list. So I'll start off with Vice Chair Camerer. If there is any ex parte communication on either of the two items that are on today's agenda.
No, no ex parte communications.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Barlow.
No ex parte communications.
Okay. Board Member Hyman.
No ex parte.
Okay. Yeah, Board Member Fields.
No ex parte communications.
Okay, and Board Member Burgess.
No ex parte communications.
Okay, and this is Board Member Hagan. No ex parte communications either. So with that, we will then move to, excuse me, item six, which is the public hearing. So we'll start off with the swearing in of the speakers.
One second while Mr. Rowe comes in as the applicant.
Okay.
Okay, Larry, you'll just need to unmute. I hope whenever you're ready.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, I do.
Okay. For item number one, then we'll have the Board Secretary read that item into the record.
A request by L.B. Rowe Incorporated on behalf of Jason Batalion for a Class B special use permit to obtain a waiver from the requirements of Section 94-304 E2 of the city's zoning and land development regulations for the installation of a swimming pool within the required front set back. The approximately .19 acre property is located at 4105 South Flagler Drive within Commission District Number Three, Commissioner Kristy Fox.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Board Member Burgess, you have your hand raised.
I'm not sure the appropriate time to disclose this, but I, my landscape architecture company does perform regular business with the applicant, so I need to recuse myself from the case.
Okay, thank you very much for, for noting that. If, if that's, if that's all, then we'll move to the, the presentation from the applicant. So, so Mr. Rowe, you may proceed with a presentation.
So this is a, a pool on the corner of Flagler and the setback is 25 feet. We want to go for 10 feet. There's three other pools that have been approved and similar thing. This will not be seen at all from the road. It'll look identical to how it is now when it's completed. We're just looking for a little bit more room up front.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll then go on to, to see if there are any questions from any members of the board for Mr. Rowe. So I'll just go down, down the list. We'll start off with Board Member Barlow. Do you have any questions for Mr. Rowe?
I do not.
Okay. Board Member Hyman.
Just one question for Larry. Larry, where is the pool equipment going to be situated? I didn't see that on the.
Yeah, it goes way back down the north side of the house. The air conditioners are back there now. It'd be nice back there.
I, I thought that, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah, the other side's actually their front yard. You know, what you typically think is their front yard, which is actually a side yard according to code. So it'd have to go on the north side. And it's way down the wall behind their garage.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Board Member Fields.
No questions, thank you.
Okay. And then I know Member Burgess has recused himself and so go back to Board Member Camerer.
No questions.
Okay, and this is Board Member Hagan, no questions. So we'll now move to the staff presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Raffiella. I'm the associate planner that has been reviewing this case. As you can see, the property is, the property is located on the northwest corner of Flagler Promenade North and South Flagler Drive. And because of the code and the location of the property, the narrowest street frontage becomes the front setback, which is why the variance is needed. So per the code, a pool must be set back 25 feet from the front property line. And because it's a corner lot, the actual side of the house becomes the, the legal front of the, of the legal front setback. So, and because that's where they want to place the pool, we need a variance. This is a view of the existing home from the corner of Flagler Promenade and South Flagler Drive. And this is a view of the home from Flat, South Flagler Drive, exactly where the pool would be located on the property, on that side. This is the location of the pool from the inside, next to the house and in front of the existing deck. This is another shot from exactly where the pool would be located. Flagler Drive would be on this side and Flagler Promenade would be along this hedge right here. And this is a survey showing the location of the pool and the distance from the legal front of the property and the corner side and the actual front of the home. Based on the considerations given through, in the staff report, we are recommending approval with the condition that the landscape hedges along the south and the east corners or sides of the property remain in order to screen the pool and reduce the impact, any impact the pool would have on the adjacent sidewall. Is there any questions?
We'll go down the, the list. Board Member Hyman, any questions for staff?
No, thank you.
Okay. Board Member Fields.
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Board Member Camerer.
No questions.
And Board Member Barlow.
No questions, thank you.
Okay, and I have no questions for staff either. At this point, we'll go into public hearing. I don't know if there are any members of the public who have either, who are either in attendance virtually or in the Flagler Gallery or have left any, any digital communications. I'll turn it over to the, Mr., either Mr. Roach or the Board Secretary. Do we have any members of the public here to speak?
Mr. Chair, there's been no indication of a desire to make public comments on this item.
Okay. With that being the case, then I will close the public hearing and we'll move into executive session. So I'll turn it over to discussion if any board members want to, want to make any comments. I can go down the list again. I'll start off with Board Member Fields. Any, any comments?
No comments.
Okay. Board Member Camerer.
No comments, just to clarify, I'm just looking at the, what we're asked, being asked to approve. There is a.
There's. 25 foot.
Right, are there two aspects to what we're approving though? I'm just looking at the posed.
There's a waiver and a special use permit, so both or just one, is the question.
Do we do those separately?
Yeah, Mr. Vice Chair, this is John Roach for the record. So the way it works with the, the pools is that if they're not able to meet one of the requirements, you know, such as the setbacks, first they need to be granted the waiver. So that will be the first action item and then the second will be the Class B special use permit to allow that pool. So you'll see in your packet, there are two scripts for you. The first one being granting of the waiver.
Correct.
If that's the direction the board chooses to go. And then the second will be granting of the special use permit. So you will need to do both.
And the conditions suggested by the city apply to the granting of the special use permit?
Correct.
Okay. No other questions?
Okay. Board Member Barlow.
No questions, thank you.
Okay, and see, I haven't asked, Board Member Hyman? Any comments?
No.
Okay. So, and just turning it over to myself, I think this is very similar to a case that we had at the very last meeting where the corner property, per our code, the shortest distance on a corner, on a corner property, if it fronts two, two rights of way, the code indicates that, that the, the length, that is the shorter property line is declared the front of the property. Yet you can have cases like this where the, the actual functional front of the property is instead the longer edge of the property, which I think was the case the prior month and appears to be the case here. If that were the case and if Flagler were to decide it to be the side yard, the setback would be 10 feet, which is what's being requested. So I think it's very similar to that. So I don't think we have a motion yet. We'll entertain a motion on this, this item. First, as, as was clarified, there are, there are two separate items. So we would first need a motion on granting the waiver.
I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant the waiver for ZBA case number 3388 as listed in the staff report dated March 4th, 2021. The motion is based upon determination that the testimony presented at the hearing, along with the application submitted constitute a preponderance of competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that the waiver requests that satisfies all the criteria of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations, Article 2, Section 94-36 and Article 9, Section 94-273A2.
Okay, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, the, the item has been moved by Board Member Fields and seconded by Board Member Camerer. I will ask the Board Secretary to please call the roll.
Hope you're muted.
Christopher Hagan.
Yes.
Christopher Camerer.
Yes.
Malika Barlow.
Yes.
Michael Hyman.
Yes.
Alfred Fields.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. We'll entertain a, a motion from the board for the, regarding the special use permit.
I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grants ZBA case number 3388 a requested by L.B. Rowe Inc. on behalf of Jason Batalon for a Class B special use permit to construct an accessory swimming pool within the required front yard setback of the property located at 4105 South Flagler Drive. The motion is based upon the testimony presented, along with the application submitted by, and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that each of the criteria in Section 94-36E3 through 5, Section 94-273A2 and Section 94-304D2 have been met.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Member Fields and seconded by a member Camerer. And just to clarify from staff, this, that motion includes, I believe there was one recommendation related to the landscaping. Correct, and that's included in that motion? Because we did not modify the condition?
Yes, that's included.
Okay, great. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the Board Secretary to call the roll for the vote, please.
Christopher Camerer.
Uh, yes.
Malika Barlow.
Yes.
Michael Hyman. Michael Hyman. He's frozen.
Frozen.
Alfred Fields.
Yes.
Christopher Hagan.
Yes.
Michael.
Yeah, Board Member Hyman's back. You're on mute, Board Member Hyman. Are you able to, did you hear the motion?
I did hear the motion and if you can hear me okay, I'm in favor of the motion. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
My internet's a little unstable right now.
No worries, but it looks like you're taking advantage of the beautiful weather, so I can't blame you for that.
I am outside and I happen to be right next door to the, the property that we're talking in, so.
Oh, great.
Mr. Chair, can we confirm who made the second?
Yes, I believe that was seconded by Camerer.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
Thank you.
With that, the motion passes unanimously. So, Mr. Rowe, congratulations.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
Yes, anytime.
Good, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the second case that's on our agenda today. So I'd like to ask our secretary to please read that item into the record.
A request by Darcy Carvalho on behalf of Patricia Donnelly and Douglas Stockham for a variance from the requirements of Section 94-305B4 of the city's zoning and land development regulations to increase the setback encroachment permitted for mechanical equipment in order to install a generator within the required front setback. The approximately .37 acre property is located at 250 Potter Road within Commission District Number Five, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Thank you very much. We'll first need to swear in the speakers for this item. So I know Mr. Roach was adding them into the meeting. Are they all in now?
Yes, everybody's in.
Okay, I will ask that those members or the people that are here to speak on this item be sworn in.
Did you unmute yourselves and raise your right hand? You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. I will have the, first have the applicant give us an overview of, of the case.
I, do you, would you like me to share my screen so that you can see the photos that are in relationship to the job?
Absolutely, we'd be happy to, to, to do that if, if that's, if you'd like to share those with us.
Raffiella, do you want to put the photographs up? Because I'm, there we go, share content. The house is located again on the corner of Potter and Olive. We are currently had the generator delivered. It is not connected. We ran the sub panel outside and we had issued, or filed for a permit and then became aware that the permit was being held in regards to the variance. The generator can be moved from its location. I have been told by the owner, though, that the neighbors to the east of her do not want it between the two homes. The convenience of it where it is located, though, is that all the utilities coming from Olive into the property, as well as where the panels are set in the residence and the mechanical situation that it's being connected to are all located on this side of the house. So with the generator sitting to the west side of the home, the gas regulator for the property that services the other features in the home are all on this side. The generator and the sub panel are delivered and existing. We did not connect because we didn't receive our permit. If we're faulted for that, I'm, I'm okay. I was just trying to move the job forward. The gas connection and regulator still need to be set. With the access through the gates not being infringed on, setting it against the concrete L-wall is the most convenient to not create noise for the other neighbors and to also meet the generator needs for hurricanes in Florida. Any questions or comments? I did also submit a survey showing where the placement would be in regards to the property in general.
Great. So that concludes your presentation?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay, yeah, perfect, thank you. We'll start off with questions. I'll call on Board Member Camerer. Any questions for the applicant?
No, thank you.
Okay. Board Member Barlow, any questions for the applicant?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Board Member Hyman? You're muted.
No questions, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Board Member Fields, any questions for the applicant?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, and Board Member Burgess, any questions for the applicant?
Well, the photos definitely helped to clarify my question. It was about the condition to maintain the existing perimeter wall and the existing landscape, but it looks
But it looks like the generator in place doesn't have any perceived impact on the tree material or the landscaping, so uh, so there is no conflict with having to remove any of the existing landscape, correct?
Yes, and I kept a fire barrier distance between the generator and the landscape as well.
Okay, those are my questions, thank you.
Great, thank you. And I have no questions for the applicant. With that, we'll turn it over to staff for the staff presentation.
Okay, so hello again. My name is Raffaela. I'm the Associate Planner in charge of this project. The property is located on the southeast corner of Potter Road and South Olive Avenue. And based on the code, again, the legal front of the property is along South Olive, making the requirement that mechanical equipment not encroach more than four feet kind of impossible to meet on this, in this specific case. So per the code, Section 94-305B4, mechanical equipment cannot encroach more than four feet into a required setback. Because the property is a corner, um, property, the front setback is along South Olive, making the required setback for a generator 21 feet. But because of the combination of being a corner lot and the distance requirement for, per the Florida Building Code for mechanical equipment from any doors and windows, the only location for the generator was where it's proposed. This is a view of the home along the functional front, but the corner side setback based on the code. A view of the home where the generator is located, which is the legal front of the property along South Olive. That is the existing gate and privacy wall, including the landscaping. The generator in its proposed location, and as the applicant mentioned earlier, the generator has been placed but not connected, and they have been made aware that when it comes time to get building permits, there might be an additional fee because the generator was placed without any permitting. And that is a survey just showing where the generator is going to be in reference to the legal front of the property, the home, and the functional front of the property. Based on all of the, um, the codes and the reasons given before, staff recommends approval with condition that the privacy wall and landscape screening remain in order to maintain the minimal impact the generator would have on the adjacent sidewalk. And if any, for any reason, the gener, the wall or the landscape would be removed, it would have to be, an alternate form of screening would have to be provided. And that's it. If there's any questions?
Great, thank you very much, Raffaela. We'll start off with questions. I'll go to Board member Barlow. Any questions for staff?
Sorry, no questions, thank you.
Okay, Board member Hyman, any questions for staff?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Board member Fields, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Board member Burgess?
No questions, thanks.
Okay, Board member Cammer?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, and I have no questions for staff either. With that, we'll move on to public comment. I'll check with Mr. Roach or the Board Secretary to see if there are any members of the public either in the Flagler Gallery or present on the, on the Zoom link, or if there were any electronic digital communications received as public comment on this item.
Mr. Chair, we haven't been aware of any public comment on the item.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and we'll move into executive session. So we'll go into, to board discussion on this. I'll start off with Board member Hyman. Any comments or, or discussion on the, the item?
Further comments, thank you.
Okay, Board member Fields?
Uh, no questions, no comments.
Okay, Board member Burgess?
No questions, no comments.
Okay, Board member Cammer?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Board member Barlow?
None, thank you.
Okay, I have no comments or questions either. So with that, we'll entertain a motion on this item.
I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant ZBA case number 3389, a request by Darcy Carvalho on behalf of Patricia Donnelly and Douglas Stockham, property owners, for a variance from Section 94-305B4 of the city's zoning and land development regulations to increase the setback encroachment permitted for mechanical equipment to allow a five-foot generator setback where 21 feet is required. Motion is based upon the testimony presented along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criteria in Article Two, Section 94-38D6 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of the variance is made conditional upon the following restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards that move are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations inconsistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach. And those are the conditions suggested by the city.
Excellent. So we do have a motion on the floor. Or is there a second?
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. I, I heard a few seconds, but I, the one I saw visually was the Board member Barlow, so I'll, uh, uh, say there was, uh, Board member, the motion was made by Board member Cammer and seconded by Board member Barlow. Uh, so we'll have the Secretary call, have a roll call vote.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Michael Hyman?
Yes.
Malika Barlow?
Yes.
Christopher Cammer?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes. The motion passes five to zero. That concludes the new items that were on the agenda today. I, I did, just to make sure I'm covering all the bases, I didn't indicate that there were no continued cases on our agenda, but there were none, so just to make sure that I've, I've noted that. And then we also have no administrative appeals on the agenda. That would move us to item seven, which is unfinished business. Uh, there's none on our agenda. Item eight, new business, none on our agenda, or other business, item nine. So with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Board member Barlow and seconded by member Cammer, all in favor of adjournment. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Well, thank you all very much. See you next month, or, or not, if we have cases, but but I hope you all are staying safe and healthy. Take care.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.